Welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, February 25th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, on your own, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Absent.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Absent.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Five members present, we do have a quorum. Considering except Town Council minutes of Monday, February 4th, 2019, is there a motion?
No.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Nominimus Val present. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on February 19th. Several of the items on our current agenda were on that one, specifically 17, 24, 26, and I think it was 27. No, 17, 24, and 26. We also talked about a couple of items that did not come forward yet, one of them being the Red Baron diner commercial lease, because that needed to be fixed and pre-drafted in a way that we'd actually see the whole lease. We talked a little bit about the idea of a growing hemp, but not marijuana, in Chapter 61A land, and Will gave us a quick presentation that he had gotten from the Department of Revenue, talking about the concerns that the state had, and that the fact that essentially that is under the purview of the assessors, it's not under the purview of the Town Council. So it's kind of a case-by-case basis for them. And we also postponed finishing off the expansion of the Mullen Rule to various town boards and committees for the next General Government meeting, which we'll also be talking about some Airport Commission-related issues. And some of the specific items that are on this agenda, I will bring up when we get there.
Thank you, Counsel. Do you have another meeting scheduled?
I do, but it hasn't -- hold on, I do have one. It's next week. It is the 5th, it is March 5th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor DePietro is absent. I do know he has a meeting scheduled for March 5th.
At 7:00.
At 7:00 p.m., immediately after yours. Education and Human Services, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on Wednesday, February 13th, which was moved from the 12th because of the snowstorm. As a result, there are five agenda items on the agenda for tonight for our appointments. One is a grant acceptance. We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 27th, at which Dr. Villar from the School Department will be present and giving us a state-of-the-schools update. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel. Plan and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on the 13th of February. Agenda item number 28 on tonight's agenda is what we discussed. That's all I have. We don't have a meeting scheduled yet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Protection of Persons or Property, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. There was a PPP meeting held -- oh, I can't remember the date, I'm sorry. But we have agenda items number nine through 23, it looks like, are -- no, actually, the appointments for the call firefighters are what we -- they're on the agenda tonight. We discussed them at length. Chief Normandin, he gave us the rundown for the applicants, and we're here to set their appointments tonight. I don't have any meeting planned at this time, but I am in the process of doing the minutes for that.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Chairman's announcements. I have several announcements this evening. First off, I had announced over a month ago, maybe almost two months ago, that we needed to formulate a bylaw review committee. We're looking for five resident citizens to apply for that bylaw review committee. And as of this date, we've had zero interest, and nobody has stepped forward, so I just want to bring that up again. Please, if you're interested in serving on the bylaw review committee, to please get a letter into the Town Manager's office so we can get that committee going. It is a requirement of our charter. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to a meeting with the Historical Committee. Discussion was held, something pertaining to the old Beechwood property, anybody who's familiar on South Street, that there's a potential buyer for that property. Urge any citizens that are interested in seeing what's going to be developed there, because it looks like they will tear down that piece of property and build an O'Reilly's Auto Parts store there. So I think the Plan and Development will have to go to Plan and Development and the Planning Board, review anybody that has any interest in seeing how that project goes or has concerns, to please reach out to Historical Committee and the Planning Committee. Monthly, I have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Villar. Dr. Villar is the Receiver Superintendent of the School District. As always, we have conversations as to the School District, where we're going, how the Town Council, we as a group can support the schools to better the schools. This has been a mission of ours for this fiscal year, as we moved in, as many of us on, as new counselors, in order to really support the town and move the town in the direction that it needs to go. We look at strong improvement in our schools and improvement in our public safety. We've done a tremendous job, as you will see tonight, I believe eight to nine call firefighters, and that was the final complement of restoring the Fire Department to the service it deserves to be, under new leadership. I've also had the opportunity to meet with the Commissioner of Education. Met with him last week as well, with Dr. Villar, to discuss how we as a community can work together to improve the school system, because we all know that it's been a long road, many years of work, and it still needs a tremendous amount of work. And the refreshing thoughts that come from both the Receiver and the Commissioner is that they don't sugarcoat it. I appreciate their sincerity and their honesty when they meet with us, both in private and public, that they own the last three years as the state, that they came in with a plan, their plan has not gone over well, and they understand that. And we can't go back to those three years, but we need to work together to move it forward. So I've asked the Commissioner to meet with our Council and our School Committee and the Town Manager to have a public set-in meeting, that we can all come to the table and brainstorm of how we can work together as a community to build this school system. So I look forward to that. On tonight's agenda, we had the fire station building feasibility study presentation. Regrettably, I chair that committee as well, and I know Deputy Chief Hewlock and Chief Normandin did a tremendous amount of work over the last three weeks after our last meeting to work with our architect to make sure that the presentation that we're going to put forward to the community was a solid, comprehensive presentation. Unfortunately, the architect has failed to provide that information to us in a timely manner so that we could be prepared. And it's a disservice for us as a community, and as leaders of the community, to make a half-hearted presentation for a project of this magnitude. This project is over a $20 million possibility project, long-term project, and we as a group for the last three years that have been studying this project have always gone with the thought that we're going to be deliberate, we're going to be prepared, so that the questions of our community can be answered. Because we all know that it's a needed project, there's no doubt about it, but how do we go best forth as a town, fiscally responsible, and to show the true need? So that will be postponed until the next meeting on March 11th. I believe the chief has sent correspondence to the architect expressing the dissatisfaction from the Fire Station Building Committee as to their part in this process. However, I believe that something should come from this Council and the town expressing our dissatisfaction, that we have a community here tonight that was prepared, and they failed to meet the expectations. But we will be prepared in two weeks to make a comprehensive presentation. We had several councilors at the original Fire Station Building Committee, but when we go to the town, we want to be able to express exactly how this project is going to go forward, what the needs are, and how we have to work together with our state, federal, and local partners to make this project a success. So I apologize for the fact that if you're here tonight for that presentation, that we're not moving forward with that. However, it will be postponed to the March 11th meeting. And that is all I have for this evening. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be brief tonight. All of my time in the last month or so, or a lot of my time, has been working on the budget process. Right now, all the department heads have been working very hard on putting together a budget that meets the needs of the town without overtaxation. And to date, we finished all the individual department budgets, we reviewed them all. We've had a lot of discussions with the school system upon what they think their needs are going to be going into next year. Now we're looking at the larger items like healthcare and workers' comp and insurances, so we're doing quite well. And I want to thank all the department heads for the hard work they put forth to put together this budget, and hopefully, we can present something that the town will be very happy with. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations. A, Curbside Collection Initiative. Andrew Pelletier, Director of Inspection Services, Anna Smith, Landfill Monitor Agent.
Good morning, Counselors, good morning, citizens. It's always morning in my world. We stood before you about a month ago, introduced a proposed plan to address the contamination in the recycling. One month later is a very short turnaround, but this is a program that we are energetically chasing, and we want to keep the Board, the Council, the citizens up to date on what's going on with this. So we're back again to say hello and to bring you up to date on what's going on.
Thank you and good evening. Thanks for having us once again. We wanted to give you, as Andy said, an update on where we're at with the program. We've really taken a pretty vigorous approach to improving the contamination in the curbside So I want to let you know what we've done so far. We have launched a vigorous education program. We've taken advantage of social media and have put the information up on Town Manager's Facebook page, on Focus on Southbridge. The TNG actually put an article up on their online resource, and we've updated and continue to update our website. ThinkReduce.com is the most direct link to get right to the trash and recycling information. And we have a lot of information up on our website, we'll continue to update that. We've had quite a robust response to the posts on Focus on Southbridge in particular, and we do appreciate all those comments, and we appreciate the fact that people are talking about it and kind of getting the word out and talking amongst the residents in town. Southbridge News did an article just this past Thursday, and we appreciated that, it was a good article, giving information in the Telegram as well, did one on the 5th
Some direct education with the citizens. Starting with the mailers, we have sent out a owner-wide mailing to every owner of the multifamilies in the town of Southbridge. Additional to that, or following that, we sent out a mailer to every residence in the town, or we attempted to send it to every residence. We get a couple that say they haven't received it. I want to thank the Council for supporting this. This was the money that was transferred in order to do a townwide mailer. The mailer is on the left up there. We have multiple versions of the mailer and other information that's available in our office on what is recyclable, what's not recyclable. Second part of our direct access to the citizens has been the Oops Tag. The Oops Program has been a successful program in that we've handed out approximately 750 tags out of probably just over 1,000 cans that we've opened. We are finding that depending on the neighborhood, you'll get anywhere from one-third to maybe one-tenth of the cans that don't have some minor incidents, but of most of the cans, I would say we are in the 5% to 10% that we would reject if we were not picking them
We have already seen improvement, though, in what we're seeing at the curb. We're seeing a lot less plastic bags, which is the number-one offender, and so that people are, they are getting the message about that. So we do appreciate the improvement that we've seen so far. We went back to Auburn, actually, we had Auburn do some audits, which we presented to Council the last time. We went out to Auburn early in December, and this is a Tuesday load that you see up on the screen there. You can see there's a lot of plastic bags, trash and recycling in bags, and what looks like some sort of mesh material or textiles. We returned to a Tuesday load on February 19th, and we are optimistically hopeful that we're seeing less plastic bags. You can see that it just pretty much looks like recycling without the contaminants in it. And if you look at them side by side to see the comparison of them, we are hopeful that, you know, the message is getting out there, and we are seeing improvement in it.
This was accomplished just with education. We have issued no fines, we have issued no penalties. All we've done is got the word out there that the contamination is in it, and we'd really like to get the contamination out. Really want to thank the citizens of Southbridge for the response, considering that this was not forced down their throat, that this was essentially education, really good turnaround in the condition of the loads thus far.
Counselor Manna has a question on that, I guess?
No, I just, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, just a comment. I just wanted to say thank you, because when you did the presentation for us a few weeks ago, I didn't know. I was rinsing out my plastic bags and putting them in there, my Zip Locks and stuff, so I didn't know, so now I know, and I'm retraining my children, so it is, so thank you for all you're doing.
We continue to see plastic bags and pizza boxes as the primary contaminants in the loads. People don't understand that the least amount of food waste can wipe out a whole bale of cardboard. Your cans, your bottles, you'll want to get them rinsed, but your paper has to be cleaned.
Yeah, thank you.
We do know that the word is getting out. I was in the Big Y today, and I was waiting in line to check out, and the person in front of me was talking to the clerk about the fact that she couldn't, no longer put the plastic bags in her recycle bin. So it was good to hear that conversation. So, moving forward, we will continue to do education through the Oops Tags. We're planning to do some videos on the access channel, updates and tips about recycling will continue through the social media outlets and the town website.
One thing that didn't make this slide, because it was just finalized by the Board of Health last week, is the Board is putting forth a plastic bag ban, putting a restriction on distribution of plastic bags in the town of Southbridge. That will be a hearing in early April. This Council will be getting a copy of the draft. I just wrote the memo today, and I've put it on my admin's desk to distribute. So this Council will be getting a copy of that proposed reg. We are very eager to get your comments back on that, so that we can finalize that and put it to a hearing in April. All right, next step. We have been, we told the Council this the last time we met here. We've talked to other towns, and the only way to really make the program work is to make a determination that a certain percentage of contamination in a recycled load is not going to be accepted anymore. I approach this with trepidation, because I can't imagine the number of phone calls that I'm going to get, and I put it before this Council, because I can't imagine the number of phone calls that you're going to get when we don't pick up the recycling. And basically, they have an Oops Tag on there that says what's wrong, but they're going to say, "I didn't do that, I didn't do that." I want to reaffirm, as of next week, if we determine too much contamination in the recycling, we are going to ask Casella not to pick it up. This is something we need to do in preparation of this town taking over the trash. We need to get the value of the recycling up, so that when we do take over the trash contract, we get the best deal we can get, however we end up doing the curbside.
So just to add to that, other communities that have had successful programs really bank on the fact that the materials cannot be picked up. That is really the clearest way that we can educate people. We're figuring about 10% to 15%, we expect about 10% to 15% will not be collected next So another key component with sustaining a program like this is to continue to have eyes on the curb, you know, to continue to go through the bins and put the Oops Tags on, or reject them if necessary. So I have found out about a recycling IQ Kit grant opportunity that the state allows, and they give up to $30,000 to fund positions to actually be out on the curb to do the enforcement piece of it. This would help the program to stay sustainable.
The grant allows for any uses to improve recycling, to improve trash issues. What we are looking to do with it is put two people on the curb to continue what Anna and I are doing. I'm not saying the job's beneath me, but I have other things I have to get done, rather than spending three hours a day at the curb, and Ms. Anna is going to be going back to spending most of her time at the landfill, overseeing the capping of the landfill. So I expect that her position as recycle coordinator will be significantly reduced to a supervisory position, instructing whoever we can get at curb. We're applying for this grant, we are hoping that the Council sees the value in this grant. Our plan would be temporary workers, running from about March to maybe November. We've learned firsthand, it's ridiculous to be out there in this freezing cold weather. In hindsight, we should have launched this thing in April, not in January, as Anna's in the car and I'm outside opening bins. But we're looking to put people on the curb, hoping to get those people from local resources. Hopefully, Quinn-Sig College will be an opportunity to get people, and people from the community and/or people from Nichols College, but we don't want to be reaching too far for these people. They'll be three hours a day, so they'll be about 15 hours a week, non-benefited, but it'll give the student or whoever we're using a little bit of spending money in their college life, I hope.
So there's no guarantee that we'd get the grant, but we are in good standing. We've ticked already a lot of the boxes that are parts of the grant requirements, so we are hopeful that that would be, you know, that would be something that would be available
Self-explanatory.
Again, if there are any questions, you can call the Health Department, or go on our website, you can also go on Casella's website.
Hopefully, the next time we come here will be to ask for this Council to accept the grant.
Any questions, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. First statement, thank you very much for all the work you're doing. I know it's sometimes a thankless job, and it's been interesting, the comments and feedback that I've received so far, but most of it's been positive, and so I appreciate the hard work that you guys have been doing. I do have the two questions. Monday and Wednesdays, the last brief that you gave us, Monday and Wednesday trash pickup and recycling pickup was about 30%, 35%. Has that gone down? Have you guys noticed anything on Monday, Wednesday? Because those are, seem to be kind of the areas that we need to concentrate on as well.
Unfortunately, the last two Wednesdays, I had a conference for one of them, so I couldn't be at the curbside, and I had something else going on for the other one, so I didn't get to see the last two Wednesdays. The three worst days of the week are Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, in that order, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Tuesday. The audit that we had, that we compared, was a Tuesday audit, so that was our third worst day of the week, generally speaking, our third worst day of the week, and we saw significant progress there. There's no reason to think we can't, we haven't anywhere else, but we can make it a point to get into Auburn and see what kind of improvements that have happened on the other days.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, because we did notice there was a big jump on Mondays and Wednesdays. Second question I have, I understand that come the first of the month, you're not going to be picking up, you're going to identify those bins that don't meet the requirements. Have you guys thought about anything else besides not picking up that recycling whatsoever? I mean, obviously, there's communities that have been very successful. We've been doing this, at least in my past career, we've been doing this for 20 years ago, all right, and we're just catching up now, here in this town. But, you know, there was other ways about doing it that I saw, but other towns, local towns around here, are there any other ways of doing it besides not picking up the recycling? Where they're going to ultimately take that, and they're going to throw it in the trash bin, and we're going to call it a day?
Yeah, but if we do pick up the recycling and it contaminates a truck, we're going to throw it in the trash bin anyhow.
Okay.
What I would like to see is, ideally, I'd like to see people going through it and separating it properly, once we've rejected it. I'm not optimistic that's going to happen, so I do expect some toters of recycling are going to be transferred to bags and thrown away initially. But hopefully, in the long run, people won't be putting it in that toter as a contaminated recycling thereafter, and we can get it down to the level we want it down to. To your comment that it's a thankless job, Anna and I have been out there, it's not a thankless job. People have come out of their houses, they've talked to us, they've asked questions, they've shown appreciation for the answers, or are spending our time talking to them. I've also, as I'm driving away, looked in my rearview mirror and saw people scooting out to see what I put on their toter. I really want to encourage people, while I'm putting it on, come talk to me. I'm not dangerous, but if you're going to go out and then check what it is, you might have questions. Come out while I'm doing it, if you see me doing it, and ask questions. I'll be glad to answer them.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah, the one quick question I had is kind of the flip side of what Dave was just saying, and that is, have we seen, because I know obviously we don't have our own landfill still working, but have we seen any change in the amount of recycling that's going to the landfill, or going to trash? Because, what I'm wondering is, are people, because of the Oops Tags, just tossing stuff? I hope not. I hope that's not the case, but...
Again, we can check with Auburn. They give us tonnages every month, but we haven't had, we've only had the program go in one month.
Right, I know.
So it really won't reflect, but we'll keep our eye on the recycling tonnage versus the trash tonnage and see what the trend. As I said when I introduced this program, I expect the recycling tonnage to initially take a dip. I really do, everything that, it was false numbers.
Right.
You know, a pair of shoes was weighed as recycling, but it got rejected.
Right.
It was false numbers.
Right.
So hopefully, we can figure out what the pure number is, and then from that point, work forwards towards rebuilding what should be recycled. Part of the program we hope to move forward with is a couple of videos. One of the videos we've talked about, and I think we mentioned it here, was hopefully get Casella to agree to put some students on the tipping floor with a hook and pulling out the contaminants and explaining why they're not, why they're contaminants. But another program we've been talking about is, very carefully, so we don't identify where we're doing this, go out on the curb and actually identify real toters, lay out a tarp, dump the toter out right on the curb, and go through the toter and say, "This is not recyclable because of this," and show them what's not recyclable. And then phase two of that would be to go out and take a trash toter that's got the ice cream cone, the top, and dump that one, and go through it and say, "This is recyclable, this could be reduced," and show that we can take an overflowing trash toter and make it fit in the trash toter by recycling properly.
Good idea.
Those are just two ideas we're going forward with, or one of two.
I think that would be helpful. Thanks.
Thanks for the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Moving on, Agenda 98, Citizens Forum. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the Council? Anyone? Last call, any citizens wishing to address the Council this evening? Seeing none? Moving on. Ask the chief to come forward. The next, I believe, seven items are appointments to the Southbridge Call Fire Department. Item one, vote to confirm the appointment of... Item one, vote to confirm the appointment of Joseph Clem of Southbridge as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion? Second, motion and second. Councilman?
You called that item one.
I'm sorry, thank you. Item nine, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
You all set?
I think so, yes. It's been a long day.
All right, so thank you, thank you, everybody, for having, having all of us here. As you see, we got friends and family here tonight with us. This is rebuilding our call, the fire department night, tonight. This was a very long process that started even before I became the acting fire chief in August. I'll give you a little timeline behind it. In August, right around the beginning of Labor Day, right around Labor Day, we posted for call fire department positions available here in Southbridge. Around the time of October in 18, we had an informational meeting for all of these people that did apply. This also included people that were interested in being auxiliaries within the department. All in total, we had 16 applications to go through. Lieutenants Wilson and Nichols conducted an additional meeting thereafter, after we found out where each of the, or each person wanted to be either auxiliary or a call member. Several questions were given to each of these candidates to gauge what their knowledge and skill, skill levels would be at, so we know where we could cite each employee in skill, in training, in retraining, and et cetera. They also put together at that time, at that meeting, a call schedule, call practice schedule, all the way through the whole year. So these people that are here tonight, they're very excited to get going. We're gonna be able to give them gear, get them started, and all seven of these people, I hope that you all look at the same way I do, we need to put these guys on and put them on as an appointment tonight. So Mr. Clem. So Mr. Clem, he lives in Southbridge. He has a fire degree in fire science. He's a current member of the Oxford Police Department as a police dispatcher, and also as a current call firefighter for the town of Oxford. He does not possess his firefighter one and two. There's a few people here in the, in this group here that do not have their call vol firefighter training, which gives them their firefighter one and two. He is aware that there is a class coming up this year along with the others. The last piece of the orientation with Mr. Clem and all these, these other people are, Southbridge Police Department did a background and record check. Mr. Clem is clean of that, and I put him forward to appointment.
Thank you. Councilman from the PPP, recommendation?
Just so we don't have to go through everyone, all these appointments tonight were all recommended through the PPP Subcommittee, so unanimous.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Joseph Clem? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Andrew Cornell of Fistale as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Chief?
So Mr. Cornell, he resides in Sturbridge. He's a current EMT basic, so that will supplement our EMS call volume. He's certified, certified in firefighter one and two, and also is hazmat certified. He currently works for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Southbridge Police records and background check were all negative, and we'd like to have him appointed to the department.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointment of Andrew, opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Nicholas DeDalt of Southbridge as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. DeDalt is a resident of Southbridge also. He's a certified EMT basic. He's also certified in firefighter one and two training. He currently also works for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State, State Police, excuse me. Southbridge Police Department records and backgrounds check were clear on him. I look forward to have him appointed to the department.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 12, vote to confirm the appointment of Sue Fafford DeRozia of Sturbridge as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Chief?
Ms. Fafford DeRozia, she resides in Sturbridge. She's currently waiting to hear her results on her recent EMT test, so congratulations, if everything goes well, I'm sure they will. She is not firefighter one or two. She also has an associate's in healthcare. I'd like to put her forward for appointment for the call department.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 13, vote to confirm the appointment of Matthew Langivan of Sturbridge as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Chief?
Mr. Langivan, he resides in the town of Sturbridge. This name may look very familiar to all of you. He is the son of recently retired Jeffrey Langivan, great family tradition, history here within the town of Southbridge. Matthew is certified firefighter one and two, currently a call firefighter in Dudley and in Brookfield, and I highly recommend him for appointment here.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 14, vote to confirm the appointment of Shane Nogler of Southbridge as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Motion and second. Chief?
Mr. Nogler resides in Southbridge. He does not have firefighter one and two training. He is currently a call firefighter in Dudley. I recommend for a call position here with the department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 15, vote to confirm the appointment of Matthew Phillips of Brookfield as a call firefighter for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. Motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Phillips is a resident of Brookfield. He is the son of one of our firefighters, acting, well, actually, he's an ex-position right now, which will be, he will be moving up to Lieutenant Rick Phillips very shortly here. He does not have firefighter one and two. He is a current member of the Brookfield Fire Department, but we'd like to put him on as a call firefighter.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Okay, I believe that's all of them. Thank you, chief. Congratulations, all. for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Town Manager? Do you have some? Council Daniel?
I just want to say that the next four appointments were all unanimously approved by EHS.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Town Manager?
Just also to comment, all four of these candidates, I've had an opportunity to meet them and discuss these positions with them. They're all qualified, and I want to thank a lot of them for volunteering to serve in these positions.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the appointment of Helen Boyle? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 17, vote to confirm the appointment of James Coler, Colours as an alternate to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Counsel Steve?
That was actually at Genghis at the last meeting, and we unanimously recommended it.
Genghis. All right. It's not an appointment that I'm familiar with, agricultural, but that's great, great to see people stepping up for other boards. I appreciate that.
And there is still one more vacancy for, for, for an alternate member for that board, too.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 18, vote to confirm the appointment of Susie Gears to the trustees of Soldiers, Sailors, Marines, and Airmen Memorials for one-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. 2020, thank you.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 19, vote to confirm the appointment of Russell Lacasse to the trustees of Soldiers, Sailors, Marines, and Airmen Memorials for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? I know these were staggered terms, so that's why we're having them staggered terms according, because we're just redoing this committee, right? Council Adams?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, real quick, just, we've talked about this committee here for, for the last month or so. These are two, one's a non-veteran, one's a veteran. Russ is, or Mr. Larway, or Lacasse is a Vietnam vet, and Susie is, works for the town, currently works for the town as the Director of Recreation. We also have two more veterans coming up on the next, next town council meeting. That'll fulfill the quorum of four out of the five, so, so I've got that.
Thank you, please. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 20, vote to confirm the appointment of Kevin Buxton to the curbside advisory committee effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? You have a question to this specific appointment?
Not to the person, but to the committee itself.
This is for the appointment to the committee. What, I'll allow you a minute to state your reason.
My name's John Polaski of Old Woodstock Road, and my concern is not the individuals. These are all good people that are concerned about the town, some have shown interest. My concern is that the curbside committee itself will give a myopic view on only the curbside portion. I firmly believe what we need is a waste solutions committee to look at the whole picture, so that we don't, I think this could actually be counterproductive, and I respectfully just request the council consider expanding the territory, so to speak, or the subject matter of the committee. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Polaski. Your point is well taken. It is the intent and the direction of it as a solutions committee to trash collection, I think would be more the word, of, of waste management of the town. So the intent of the committee, while we put this as curbside collection, was because, specifically to the issue that we had with the prior Casella lawsuit, was to curbside, but really, the intent of this committee is to develop solutions long-term for the wayside collection in town. So that is the intent of the committee. So thank you for your point, but it is well taken. Thank you. Any further discussion on Mr. Buxton as his appointment? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to confirm the appointment of Michael Marquetti to the curbside advisory committee effective immediately through June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Item 22, vote to confirm the appointment of Chad Splain to the curbside advisory committee effective immediately through June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. So I believe that committee is now full.
That is done.
Done, thank you. So we look forward, and I appreciate the fact that these individuals have stepped up, along with the Director of Inspections, a member from the Board of Health, as we work on the long-term solution. Believe it or not, three months are done, or four months are done from the agreement that we have with Casella, so where the clock is ticking.
That's for sure.
And my conversations with others in the state, that if we decide a solution that may be in town, any site plan may take two, two years for approval process, so we are not starting too early. And so thank you to Council Adams for spearheading this, and my fellow council is working on this, and all the individuals that have stepped up, because it is, we need to have a solution. We're not gonna kick the can down the road. I think if anybody has seen this council over the last seven months, we're an aggressive, move-forward council, so thank you all for your hard work on that. Thank you. Council Adams?
Mr. Chair, since you elaborated on that, I just want to thank those three individuals who stepped up, actually, four, the other, the other three, kind of, two counselors and the inspector, but Mr. LaRochelle, I appreciate you stepping up from the Board of Health as well, Mr. Buxton, Mr. Marquetti, Mr. Splain, who couldn't be here, he's traveling this evening, I want to thank you as well. And I was gonna wait till the end, but, of the meeting, but I'll be setting up an agenda and a meeting date here for probably first, second week of March, so we can get started. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, counsel. Item 23, vote to approve the new hiring process for the fire department for firefighters, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics.
So moved.
Second. So, Councilman?
I wanted to get it before you went to...
No, that's fine.
So I do, on, let's see, the pages aren't numbered, so it's the third page, the conditional offer of employment, and I believe I discussed this at Subcommittee, review and recommendation to the council at the Protections of Persons and Property Subcommittee. That should not be in there as conditional offer, because the Subcommittee does not have any weight on whether or not this is, gets approved, they get approved. They don't get appointed, they don't get anything down, it's just a vetting process. That's all it is.
Right, I know, we did talk about that.
So, that should, I asked that to be taken out, and I believe somebody said they were gonna take it out, and it was never taken out. So I won't support this with that in there. Because it says, review and recommend to the council at the Protections of Persons and Property, okay? That should just be totally taken out. There's three town councilors and two citizen members on that committee. And like I said, again, it holds no weight.
Well, no, I appreciate the fact that it doesn't hold any weight. I think when we talked about this process, it was what, to make sure that we include the steps. So one of the steps, it does have to go to PPP.
Right, so then it should be taken out, then, of conditional offer of employment, because that, it's, that's not a condition of employment. That's something that the...
I understand what you mean, yeah.
That's something that the chief or the deputy chief should bring to the Subcommittee and say, hey, these who, these are who we want to appoint, you know, we want to put it through the vetting process, or whatever. But it should not be a conditional offer of employment.
I think the intent in regards to that is that the whole process from going through PPP, well, starting with our process that we have here in front of you guys, the whole process is completed up until the end of appointment of council, which they will be given an appointment for, for future employment. I think that's the intent of where that wording sits right there, but we can go back to and review it one more time and bring it up to another council meeting, if you'd like to do that.
Mr. Chair, if I may respond to that, I don't think we should have to bring it back downstairs to another meeting and then bring it back up here again. Perhaps that should be under, like, the timeline, because we're reviewing it, and that's part of the process, not conditional. What's in, what should be part of the conditional offer of the employment is, you know, the, the approval of the full town council.
Yeah, I think...
It shouldn't be, PPP should not be under that at all.
Okay. You know, I'd be, chief, if it's okay, I appreciate all the work that went into this. I think maybe if we table this to the next meeting, but I don't think it has to go back to PPP. It's just that we'll sit and maybe redraft the steps to make sure the steps are included, because I agree with you, there is no conditional offer of employment until it goes to the council. So I think we'll just work on the timeline and the steps, and then we'll just bring it back up to the, to the committee, the full committee, if that's okay.
I may suggest not tabling this.
Huh? What's that?
Don't table this, we need to postpone that.
Postpone it, yeah, we'll postpone it. So we'll postpone it to the next meeting, and we'll sit, you can sit with the town manager, maybe, Kim, we can just adjust that timeline, because I understand your point, your point is well taken, because there is not, it's not a conditional offer of employment until they've already been given to here, then it's, okay, now you have to do A, B, and C.
Correct. The opportunity to make it through the whole process would be their conditional offer of employment.
Right, because it goes...
For one-year probation period.
Correct, because they don't go for medical clearance until we appoint them.
Correct.
Right, so that's the timeline, I think we'll just have to include here. So step one will be, you know, present to Protection of Persons and Property, upon approval, move to full council for confirmation. If confirmed, then move to medical clearance, you will be given a conditional offer of employment, and then given, sent to medical and this, and then you're on your way.
I agree.
So we can clear that?
Yep.
All right, so, motion to postpone to March eleventh? Second?
Second.
All those in favor of postponement? Opposed, thank you. I apologize for not catching that, but thank you for bringing that forward.
You're welcome.
All right, so Chief, thank you, I appreciate it, and I'll meet with you and Chief Hewitt for the Fire Station Building Committee to talk about the architect during the week, okay?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. And just for the public, I do appreciate the chief and the deputy chief meeting with the PPP in this process, and going through the steps with us, and allowing us our input into making sure that we have a real clear-cut process for hiring, not only the Fire Department, as I was discussing in the PPP meeting, it really is, they can come in on the town to develop solid policies and procedures about hiring all different departments, so that when different councils come aboard and different town managers, it's a very clean process that, okay, if I have a vacancy, whatever department it is, how do we fill this, this, this position? And what are the steps we're going to use? And we're going to move to the appointment of officers in the department, then the Police Department will take a look at that, because even though it's civil service, there should be a clear delineation of whose task it is, how long the process should take, so that, God forbid, we're not in the same position as we were in July with so many vacancies that we had to fill, and some questions about how do we go forward. So I do appreciate the chief's input in this and working with us, and allowing us to be partners with you in developing this process, thank you very much. Excuse me. Item twenty-four, vote to, vote to, vote that the town waive its right of first refusal for apostles zero-two-six dash zero-zero-three dash A dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one, three-oh-one, Dresser Hill Road, with forty-eight point six-six acres and three-point-three-six acres excluded. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Council Steve?
That was at the last Genghis meeting. Just a quick summary of what, so this is an issue where they are trying to put a whole bunch of solar panels up on a property that's on Dresser Hill, it's already gone through planning board, it has already been approved over there, and this is kind of the final step, and I'll, it passes a three-to-one vote, I voted against it as a, primarily as a protest vote, because I know it'll pass, but because I'm tired of seeing solar going up in all of these properties, that is getting, it's getting ridiculous, personally. I think we need to do something about that if we can as a town. But the issue here is that, this is a, this has been sixty-one A, it's a sixty-one A property, and they are trying to remove almost fourteen acres out of it for the solar project. Will told us that the Board of Assessors looked at it behind, at the property behind the house, that it's landlocked, that they don't see it have any particular town uses. Let's see, they, it's in forestry at the moment, and, well, no, sorry, this is sixty-one A, so it's agricultural, horticultural, which means they're, they're taking some sort of forestry products out of it. And the issue is that they were, he pointed out that the, that the wild card for protection in sixty-one A properties lately has been the solar issues, because a lot of the owners are being offered lots of money. It used to be fairly rare to take people, to have people take things out of sixty-one, but not, and there is still tons of sixty-one A or B properties in town, but there's also, we're also losing several of them, mostly to solar. As of right now, they, let's see, they have to, to do sixty-one A, they have to be submitting to a state forester, and as far as, as far as Will is aware of it, that they have been following the plan up to date. When they get taken out, they've already paid back five, five years in back taxes, and actually, he didn't specifically state how much that was, that I recall. And as it is, as it is right now, some of, the issue, the issues surrounding solar in general are kind of in limbo at the state, at the state level, as far as dealing, dealing with how to, whether, whether or not they should be coming to the town to, to take it out of sixty-one first, before putting the solar, before doing the planning for solar, because I raised an issue there, that technically solar isn't supposed to go on a sixty-one property. So, but that's still a legal limbo issue at the state level. And he said he expects the legislature to eventually decide that. The state, however, did define solar as not being agricultural. So, and as I said, we did, we did recommend it three-to-one.
Thank you. Council Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm just going to, Council Steve said that he's fed up, basically, with the solar.
I am.
I am as well, and I don't know if this pertains to this, but I just want to put it out there, we as a town council have a right to discuss putting, is it a moratorium? Is that the word I'm looking for?
Probably.
On solar? So that's something, perhaps, that maybe general government should put on their.
Right.
An agenda, and talk about this, because you're right, they're coming to the towns, I mean, they're like twenty years, trading, we don't know, are they going to actually come pick up this, you know, do what they say they're going to do? You know, is it really bringing in that much money? I don't think it is, and it's something we should really look at.
I agree.
Do we really want to go into, for Christ's sakes, we live in the north, okay?
Right.
I mean, today wasn't sunny at all.
Right.
So it's just something that we should discuss at town council, I mean, at general government.
I agree. I tend to agree with you, too, as to the fact, too, I think there are certain things coming down the line with taxation of these solar farms, and the towns had thought that they were going to get a lot of taxes, revenue from these solar farms, and that may not be the case, so.
We can look at our neighbor, Charlton.
Take a look, exactly. It's a big issue. Any further discussion from Councils? Council Steve?
Yeah, just one quick point as also, that is, I think the real underlying issue as far as when they can take it out and all this planning, is, is the fact that, that these, these plans jack up the price of the land, which make it almost impossible for the town to buy it. Not, not that at the moment we don't have money to buy the land anyway, it would be nice if we did, but, so I, that's why, that's why I assume that we will end up waiving the right of first refusal, but it would be nice if we had a fund to be able to do something like that with, or, we could, and that's one of the reasons I agree with you, that we need to put a moratorium on some of these things, so that we can figure out what we can do with some of these properties.
Council Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So how many days do we have left for the one-hundred-and-twenty days? Are we at the deadline?
If I remember correctly, it's something like two months left.
We have two months left. So why not, let's just, let's, let's wait, let's wait.
I thought it was three months, I thought it was ninety days.
It might, it might be ninety days.
Now, it's a hundred-and-twenty days. We have a hundred-and-twenty days.
There's a hundred-and-twenty days total, we got the paperwork.
How many days do we have left, though?
I think we got the paperwork after the, at the end of the first month, so I think we have, I think we have three months left.
Right, so they notified us, and if we take no action on this, at the deadline of the one-hundred-and-twenty days, it's just like that pocket veto, everything goes away, right? So maybe we shouldn't be voting on this right now, maybe we should look out for, see if there's any other options out there.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
I mean.
At the, at the, at the end of the one-hundred-and-twenty days, it does default to a yes, which means they automatically get it.
Right, no, I know.
So.
I, I get that. So, I mean, so maybe we should just postpone this agenda item for now.
We did get the notice on January tenth by certified mail.
Right. So if we have that time.
That's the start of the clock, yep.
So we got the notice on January tenth. This was discussed at a general government meeting, maybe we should be allowed more time to see what our options are, to see if there's anybody willing to fund the money, to see if we could preserve the property, or, or do something. I mean, we did it for the land up on the, by the industrial park, we looked for other options.
You're right.
You know, I mean, to me, solar is just going to be junk in twenty years anyways, so why not see if we can get some land preserved or something? Somebody's out there willing to spend that money on land.
Right, okay. Mr. Marquetti, do you have a comment?
Mike Marquetti, one-twenty, Marie Avenue, I was actually going to ask that this be postponed, too, but I did have a couple of questions, is this the property right before you go into the airport? At the top? Oh, okay.
No, this is up on Dresser Hill Road, it's, if you're going toward Charlton, it's on the left side on the hill, it's behind, it's, it's the Remaillard property, it's behind, there's like a, like a, a small, I think there's a place in there that does car work or something, but they've got, they've got a couple of small houses and businesses back there, and it's up there.
So we have motion to, to waive it, but there, is there?
Are you making a motion to postpone?
Yeah, I make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely? I don't know if I would postpone indefinitely, I mean.
Well, we can bring it up again.
Well, we can, we can take it up, we can take it up.
We can take it up again, we don't want to put a date on it, we have, I mean, even if we don't bring it up again, you know, I mean, we bring it through subcommittee, we talk about it, and it doesn't come back up here.
Okay.
At the end of the one-twenty, it'll automatically default.
It defaults to them, yeah.
So you want to postpone to a later date? Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of postponing to a later date? Opposed, unanimous, all present, we'll postpone that to a later date. Thank you. Vote to appropriate, item twenty-five, vote to appropriate forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents from water retained earnings to fund the payment to the town of Charlton, representing their share of annual earnings based on the intermunicipal agreement, IMA, for water, as approved at Town Council meeting in January twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, agenda item twenty-seven. So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Manor?
Mr. Chair, we've already actually passed this, but in the other vote, it didn't have the words water retained earnings account, all this does is clarify what account it comes from, and Karen asked me, our finance director, asked me to bring it forward to just have that clarified.
Further discussion? Councilor?
I think it should be mentioned, it's a contractual agreement.
Correct, yeah, 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 it's nothing we can do.
So I'm, I'm to clarify, Kate, for the sake of Robert's rules, shouldn't we be technically amending the previous agenda item? The, the agenda item from, shouldn't we be rescinding the January twenty-eighth vote and revoting it, then? Because technically, this would create a situation where we're paying them out of, paying them out of two different accounts.
The, I think from what the finance director said, is that the account wasn't identified at all last time.
It wasn't.
So this identifies it for the first time, so I don't think money would, obviously money wouldn't come from two different accounts.
I would hope not, yeah.
Just, just this one account, so it's okay the way that you don't have to withdraw or do anything, or rescind the last motion, because it didn't identify any account at all.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item twenty-six, vote to ratify the contract with Roselli, Clark, and Associates in the amount of one-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars to perform the audits for the town of Southbridge for fiscal years two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Council Steve?
That was also at the last Genghis meeting, and we approved it unanimously, four to zero. Karen talked a little bit about this, she, she mentioned that the current contract expires for the, expires this year, and handles the fiscal, up to, up to fiscal eighteen's audit with Melanson and Heath, and they're almost done with the current, with the current audit now. This, Roselli and Company, was, was our prior auditor, they wanted to switch it over a little bit, just to basically get the taste of somebody different. The quotes were very close, the only, the only difference was that Melanson was about five hundred bucks higher on one of the specific areas of it. So she wanted to do the lowest, and also thought that Roselli actually provided a somewhat better service, although both of them were pretty good. She said that, that Melanson Heath had some auditors weren't quite as experienced, and they weren't finding some of the issues that we were sending them as easily as we wanted, we had to keep rescinding some stuff, but Roselli has lots more experience and had great suggestions with their management letters in the past. So as I said, we, we unanimously approved it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I recall them doing the audits many years ago, and I think I met a couple of those individuals at the MMA, had a great conversation with them, so they did a great job for us when they were here previously, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item twenty-seven, vote to accept the Massachusetts market and partnership Massachusetts FY two thousand and nineteen earmark grant, per line I am seven-zero-zero-eight dash zero-nine-zero-zero of FY two thousand and eighteen Mass state budget for the Council of Agent Latino Seniors in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, with all funds to be expended by June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Council Daniel?
This agenda item came up in front of VHS, and it was unanimously approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Steve?
Yeah, I just want to point out, there was one item that we also discussed that was related to this, that we ended up shooting down all, I wasn't, I'm not on this committee, but it was also shot down unanimously, which was the idea of putting fifteen thousand bucks toward, toward paying somebody to coordinate all of this stuff, because nobody really had any idea about the, essentially of the legalities of doing this, there is no legal organization that's doing this, so. But the grant itself is not necessarily a bad idea, it'd be nice to, to see some more programming for, for Latino seniors and things like that, I think the idea's not necessarily a bad one. It's just that, we didn't, we weren't sure who's actually going to end up shouldering the burden for that particular function, so.
Council Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So Council Steve brings up the question, who oversees this? The Council on Agent for Latino, Latino Seniors? Who oversees, like, all of that? I'm just, I'm curious, because we don't, I mean, I think this is, like, they share the community, everybody shares a senior center, right? And the money goes to different funds, for, like, I don't know, trips, or, I don't know what they do, to be honest with you.
So this is, I know Council Adams has been very involved in this, and I thank him for him reaching out to Senator Fatman and Representative Durant, this has been probably the most aggravating grant I think I've ever experienced in my tenure in government, which goes back many, many years, as to, I, I appreciate and I applaud our legislators for getting this money for the Latino group, because they were promised money years ago, and I'm sure Council Adams can expound on this if he wishes, years ago, it passed, it got approved by the legislator, the money that was earmarked for Southridge somehow ended up with a group in Worcester.
Yeah, that's, that was a couple years ago.
And they took, they took the money away.
Yeah.
So Council Adams reached out to the legislators about this money, we had meetings, Council Adams and I, with Representative Durant, Senator Fatman, they assured us, no, this would be a two-year grant, no, you could get this, no, it'd be easy to do this, and as state government is, they're now telling us in February, almost March first, that we have to expend all this money by June thirtieth of this year. So there's, we will work, I think, as a town, to make sure that we come up with some planning on what best they can use that money, so I'll leave it at that, but they have fifty thousand dollars, and hopefully we can work with the legislators to do something with that.
Okay, yeah, because a couple years ago, there was questions on the money and stuff. So, but perhaps, maybe Council Adams could answer this, because I know it's his turn to speak next.
That's right.
That maybe some of the money can go into improving the, the senior center, because that's, they use that, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we did talk about the possibility of just brainstorming, we felt as, when we, when this came to the subcommittee, to have fifteen thousand dollars just go to a grant coordinator was irresponsible money management for three-month tenure. But as a group, perhaps we could come up and work with the seniors, just to say, okay, the Latino center, hey, let's look at computer stations in the senior center that the Latino, that this Latino group, because it is earmarked for them, could put some software in and maybe get some English language learner software that they could use as computer. Then could we work to get tours set up, pre-purchased tours into Boston, so that they could learn about history, and things like that, and I'll let Council Adams, it was part of this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the, the, the discussion on this, because it really started off as a very easy grant. I wouldn't say it was easy for the group to get, but it turned into, you need to spend it by, by the time we received it from the state, it was, now you have to spend it by June thirtieth, fifty thousand dollars, and there was no plan on how to spend this funding whatsoever. So the town has received twenty-five thousand dollars of that. They will not receive the other twenty-five thousand dollars until they show receipts that they are spending the other twenty-five thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we have yet to receive the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Because of the plan?
Turning in the signed grant document that you vote on tonight, we'll get the twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, all right, so once we get, once we sign off on this, or if we sign off on this, we'll receive that amount of money. The other half won't come until after we show receipts that the money is being spent, the plan has to take effect. So I think what it was, was they received this, this, these funds or this contract, and with no plan, and I believe Representative Durant was instrumental, working with the senior center as well. I do think we're in agreement, though, how do we go about spending the money properly instead of $15,000 on somebody for four months of work, who promised nine months of work? We can go in a rabbit's hole with that one. But I will say is, I will be working with the, the senior center to see, and the town manager, see how best we can actually spend this, this money. This group does deserve it, they've been waiting years. Obviously, the first pot of money never even got to, to them in the first place. And there wasn't just myself, it was former Councilor Morales as well, working with Senator Fatman and Representative Durant, and a few others. So it's just not myself, but it was a few others. So it turned out to be something that was bigger than we expected, or we were told it would be.
You all set?
Yeah.
Counselor Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my question still isn't answered. Who, who oversees the Council of Agen? Who's, like, there's got to be somebody. Who's the group?
It's not.
Who is the group?
It's, it's not, the council, in this case, we're talking about the people that are involved in working with the Latino group, is the Mike Tramley, the senior center director, and the program coordinator working with this group to help them figure out a budget, and they'll be overseeing the money to the degree that it has to be approved, the expenditures have to be approved through my office.
Okay. So, we received the grant in 2018? Am I right in saying that?
We're just receiving it now.
We're just receiving it now.
We applied for it in 2018?
It was, I accept-
It was an earmark. It wasn't something that-
It was earmarked.
Right.
It was earmarked.
Set aside, yep.
Okay. So in 2018, for us, so.
Yeah.
And we're receiving it now?
Mm-hmm.
And we have to have all the money spent by June 30th, 2019?
Now, there's a, so, not to interrupt, but we sat down to, with Senator Fatman, he also explained that there is a possibility of extending it and rolled over to the new fiscal year as well.
Well, that's, that's, that's good.
That would be helpful.
I'm just like, I guess I'm just disappointed on, like, nobody, I'm not, not you guys, but nobody knew what was going on till actually it was going on.
I, I think-
So it's, it's disappointing, it's disheartening, is what it is.
It really is, and I have to say, it was not on the town side, I don't believe at all. I think it's, it's, you had the legislators who were trying to make up for something that this group had been promised that didn't get, so they did their best to filter it through theirs, and then when they got to us, it's, and then it was like, okay, what agents, it's almost like, what agency is it going to, and how's it, so it's just been very complicated. So I think the best course of action is, we approve the grant, we say, okay, we have $25,000, how do you want to spend that money? With, and I do believe there's avenues that they could use this money, and we could very specifically target those funds, and then work with the Senator to see if they can have, I think he had to put it into a resolution to move it over to the next fiscal year, so.
Okay. That's, let's get one more thing. So will the town council see where this money's going, once this grant?
I believe so, I think we'll, yeah.
Will we see, will we see the plan? Because I, we're, we're voting on the plan without seeing the plan, because we have to spend it by June 30th, 2019.
Is it attached to it?
It was a pretty vague-
There it is, right there. It's on there.
It's in our packet, it's a pretty vague.
It's a pretty vague breakdown of, of how much they're spending. However, it is very vague.
Minus the $15,000 for that one individual coordinator.
Right.
Program coordinator, educational day trips, transportation, elder bus. This, to me, and I'm not trying to say anything bad about anybody, because I know somebody had to put something together.
Yeah.
But that's just what it is. Somebody wrote down something just to make it look good for the state, so we can get this money.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
There's no plan. There's no plan. This isn't a plan.
So, you know, I will say, Mr. Chair, real quick, I, I do think there was a, you
know, everybody is well-intended, when, from the Senator all the way down to the, the group that's receiving. Now, I understand it's not the most perfect thing, because I don't think anybody intended to be this difficult. Fact is, we did receive this amount of money, we can receive this amount of money for this group, who has deserved, who has worked hard for it, who has brought this group together. There are mostly senior Latino individuals that are lacking in funds to help support them to move from here to Worcester for medical care or education, period. The plan was set up through the senior group, or the senior center, with Representative Durant. Once, he, he actually was taking this up to get approval, or I should say oversight of it. From my understanding, this was okay with them, because this is all they were asking for, in a sense. It wasn't a detailed, laid-out plan. If, I think if it was, we wouldn't have received, you know, maybe four months of work out of somebody, and then say, there was nine months, but we're going to get really nine months. And that does, that's not the way it works. And that's why that one agenda item during EHS was actually voted down, because it didn't make sense. Now, this being said, we still have that $15,000 that they've earmarked, or they've set aside for their plan. Now, that may be, they go out there and they buy the tickets, they buy the bus tickets, they buy the, the education passes, whatever it may be, that's, that's going to be on them with oversight of the town itself. That, that will be, from the town manager to the senior center coordinator. So, just wanted to clarify that just a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more thing, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Counsel.
That was my next question. It's like, okay, so then who's going to make sure that this stuff gets enforced, and it's being spent exactly on what it is supposed to be spent on? And will we see updates on it? Because, I mean, we want to see the seniors, but, you know, thrive and, and, and get this money, and, and get their activities, and whatever this grant money offers. But a couple years ago, the money was, like, gone. The, our seniors didn't get it, like you said. And that was a big to-do. And so we want to make sure that our seniors get this, and that somebody does follow through on this, and there's, somebody is overseeing it, and there's a watchful eye. That's all.
Okay. Counselor Steve.
I would like to suggest that we amend it then to add, and all expenses to be approved and overseen by the town manager's office, with periodic updates on what it's used for.
I, I would second that, I would support that motion.
Since you kind of said you were going to do that anyway.
Okay, so, did you get that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
No? All those in favor of the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of, oh, any further discussion on the motion as amended? Do you have clarification? You all set?
Yeah.
Everybody else? All those in favor as amended? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Thank you. Item 28, vote to ratify the agreement between Benoit Design Group and Town of Southbridge for architectural and design services for the community development, community development block grant, CDGB commercial rehabilitation program, in the amount described in attachment B price proposal. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Second.
Counselor Mayor?
Good.
Did you want to introduce it first? I didn't see your answer. Counselor Mayor?
Okay, so, I know this is CDGB money, but this is a contract also. In 3.1, on the first page, the town shall designate a project representative authorized to act on its behalf with respect to the project. The town's representative is Rosemary. I have no doubt that she, she's not qualified, but it's just because it's a contract that concerns me. Will she be making any type of contract, like, it's contract, the town manager's in charge of contracts. They come through us, they come, they, we, you know, the town manager brings them to us. Now, Rosemary's going to be in charge of this. I mean, does that make sense? I mean, does she have to bring it to the town manager for approval? I mean, this is, like, our town manager's the one in charge of the contracts, and we're putting Rosemary in charge of this contract. That's how I see it. I'm not saying that she's not qualified, I'm just saying that it's our town manager's responsibility.
Do you have a response to that?
Well, frankly, I'm trying to think about it. The way I understand it in the past, I can't speak to it, this is, as you say, CDGB money, and this, this contract that we're looking at tonight had to be approved by them before they could bring it forward to us. In terms of the individual product, projects, right, they might do an awning at a particular business in town, and let's say they approve, I don't know, $3,000 to do the awning. That is, my understanding is, the contractual agreement between the CDGB grant people, essentially the town, through the state, using state money, would be between, I guess, the town, or the CDGB, and, and the applicant for that grant. I'm truthfully, in thinking about it, as you've said that to me, I don't think I've ever seen one. Most of these, as you remember, these programs kind of stopped before I got here. They, I think there might have been one or two awning projects, but most of them kind of stopped, we've been using CDGB money for other things. But I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall ever seeing an individual contract between the town and one of these people who got their awning works done. I think it's all been handled under CDGB, unless you know something else, David.
No.
Go ahead, Counsel Adams.
I have not seen it go, gone through the town manager at all, last few years whatsoever. So that's an interesting question to have. Would it, would it go through? Because a lot of the awnings, or the facades, or whatever it may be, has gone through, right through Rosemary, right?
To you, Mr. Chair, it can be approved by the state. Any individual contract, and any, any project has to be approved by the state. So, because the state funds, I think they handle all of this, it really is not something that's come through my office.
Money.
Counselor Steve.
I think from, from, you know, I'm kind of a veteran counselor at the moment.
Can't hear you.
And I don't, I don't recall ever, I don't actually ever recall seeing a specific contract with a house owner or a business coming up to this level. They are usually handled by, they are usually handled down in the planning office by, by Rosemary, or Sandy did it before them, before Rosemary, or whoever, what's her name, Peg Deans could probably going to be handling most of these things right now. Although, I think they, I think Rosemary's being designated as the town's representative simply because she's a department head. I think Peg Dean will probably end up doing most of the work. I would imagine, I would imagine that the sign-off for the contract probably should be the town manager, you're right. But I honestly don't know how this has been done in the past. It has been a while since we saw any of these things.
I've never seen one. I think it's, I think it's, it's a state process. I don't think it includes the town manager, I think it's a state process, how this works.
Probably is. I mean, I know, for example, like, that when it comes to, I don't think that necessarily applies to the business side of it, but I know, for example, when they're talking about housing rehab that's being funded by CDGB, there's a lot of confidentiality issues involved. And I think that that falls specifically under the CDGB laws, but I don't know exactly what they are.
The housing stuff never came up.
Yeah. But I don't think that applies necessarily to the business, business side, awnings and things like that specifically, but.
To your point about the town manager being responsible, he is responsible for bringing the contracts to us and having them approved, but-
Which he did.
I think with this, it's just saying that they will be the representative specifically to this project, I don't have a problem with that. That would just be like, if we had a grant to the fire department, and they said, you know, we, we may approve the grant for, you know, we, we allow the fire department to go out and get the grant for the stretchers.
Right.
So while the town manager may approve that contract, we approve the grant, the project representative is going to be, I think Deputy Chief Hewlett was the one that wrote it. So the project representative is the chief.
Right.
But we, the town manager is the award and authority.
Right.
So that's why he was assigned for this. But she's just the representative to work with whoever the vendor is. I think that's the intent of that language.
I think that's probably right, yeah.
Any further discussion on this?
Actually, no, I'm reading over the question, Mr. Chair, real quick, you know, that's just assigning her as the representative, and then we look at this contract itself, it's a consultant. That's why we're spending this money. And if I'm not mistaken, during our meeting, we did have, and it was voted unanimously in favor of, this was the one time that the town did not use a consultant, they got their hands slapped, or the town got their hands slapped for not utilizing a consultant, per se, instead of just individually doing it themselves. So.
Okay. Any further, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Counselors forum. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On February 7th, Counselor Adams and I and Dr. Villar paid an unannounced visit to Charlton Street School, and there was a mixed bag of observations that we made, and I don't say that cynically, or in a negative sense. We didn't expect anything to be, everything to be perfect, but we were hoping to see improvement in what was going on, and we did. The students were respectful, under control, and in the learning mode, in the classrooms and in the hallways. When we questioned the students, they were happy to explain what they were doing, they understood what they were doing, and they were really quite animated about what it was that they were doing. They were happy to be there, they were happy they were learning. Most of the teachers and the assistants were actively engaged in teaching. There wasn't just handouts and busy work, there was, there were, there were hands-on work that was going on, small group work that was going on, and it was nice to see that that was happening. Students were treated with dignity and respect, which I also enjoyed seeing, because that way it's a two-way street, the culture and climate of dignity and respect going both from the teachers to the kids, and from the kids to the teachers. To talk a little bit of inside baseball, there was evidence of grade-level curriculum coordination in the classrooms, which indicates that teachers are talking and not working in a vacuum. Encouraged teamwork builds a positive and more robust work and teaching environment. When everyone is on the same page, more is accomplished, and the children are better ed, better educated. The consistency also helps to build a sense of security in the children, which is something that all children look for. So the fact that I saw that, that curriculum coordination proves to me that some of what Dr. Villar had mentioned in the past about what he was trying to accomplish has started. And that's a, a top-down effort, and includes a lot of work being done by the administration of Charlton Street School, working with their teachers, and with the teachers working amongst themselves to get that job done. So on the whole, I was impressed and happy to see what I saw there that day. It's funny, we're talking about grants tonight, I just wanted to mention that since July 1st, 2018, there have been 18 grants awarded in Southbridge for a total of $3,169,988.30. That's 3.1 million not coming out of your tax dollar. These grants range from $2,924 for fire safety equipment, to $13,000 to the local arts council, to $500,000 for bridge repair on Ashland Ave, to $825,000 CDGB grant, a large portion of which is to be applied to repairs on Main Street and the traffic lights. Please note that these grants take time to turn around. The small bridge grant for Ashland Avenue was begun in June of 2017, and we only just were awarded that grant earlier this month. So I want to say that we are looking, and by we, I mean, the town manager, the department heads, and the council through its sources are looking for various ways to supplement our budget. We're looking for alternative forms of funding. It doesn't always seem like it's happening, because these wheels do turn slowly. Having to wait 18 months from the time you first put pen to paper, until you finally hear back from the state, or the federal government, or the granting authority, is long. There's nothing we can do about that, that's what the process is. There just is a lot of red tape and a lot of paperwork. But I want to thank the town manager and the department heads for the work that they're doing. 3.1 million is no small task. That's not bad at all. You may have noticed that during the last few council meetings, there have been many appointments to various boards and committees. The council has asked citizens to become more involved, and I'm very happy to see that citizens have answered the call. A lot of boards were inactive, and now they're no longer inactive, they are active, and they're very active. I'm very grateful to the citizens that you've heard us and you've responded. But it can't end there. There are still more boards and committees that have vacancies. There's still a lot more work to be done, and I encourage those of you who are thinking about it to check the town websites, to call me or another counselor, to go to the town manager's office, and to find out just what other vacancies there are. There's a lot of different vacancies that will apply to a lot of different interests that you, the citizens, have. I think that you'd find them to be rewarding, and I think it, I think that it's not thankless, I think it is thankful. There's a lot of self-esteem and a sense of worth that you build up by doing something good for, for your community, and don't believe what you hear on social media. For the most part, I would say 95% of the people in town really do appreciate the work that, that you do, understand that what you're doing is hard, and are very thankful for the work that you're doing. So I encourage citizens to keep at it, I encourage citizens to come forward and work with us, and I thank you very much for that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, so you stole the thunder there. I will say as citizen volunteers, I want to thank you for taking the time out of your day to do what you're doing. We just stood up pretty much two boards, and we fulfilled them already, or filled them up. So, just because we're getting the word out, and the, I believe the citizens of this town really do care about what this, the progress that the town is actually making. I want to wish Rose Ponor the best in her retirement. Her last day is the 28th of February. She, she's really done a lot for this town, spent a lot of time and energy in this town, so I wish her and her family nothing but the best in her new chapter of her life, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Pedro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I've had you this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a friendly reminder, the kids are back in school, February vacation's over. Winter is not over- Winter is not over yet, even though the groundhog, you know, said spring's right around the corner. It's not. Just remember to shovel your sidewalks for those who walk on the sidewalks. And just remember, too, that we've had that freeze thaw, and it just does get really slippery. And also, the bylaw review committee, Counselor Jovan mentioned that. That's really, really important. And if US citizens, you know, have any interest in how our town runs, or if you just want to look at it, your review on the bylaws to make sure that they're in line with the charter and with the state laws, that's all you're doing. And you're making any recommendations that would need to be made, if any. That's a committee that you should really, really step up to, and I hope to see some people soon for you. Also, there's going to be, like, five seats open on the town council, so, you know, get out your nomination papers and get those signatures. It's really important for new faces, too, just to get out there and get involved. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You kind of stole some-- one of the items I was going to grab, because I was going to grab the election issue, but that's good. So definitely take out papers if you're interested. I also wanted to point out that on Thursday, the 21st, there was a very interesting presentation over at the library from Frank Morrell and Jeanette Greenwood, talking about their photo display of very rare and unique photos of the black community in Worcester. Most-- a lot of them are ex-slaves that come up here, and it was talking about-- they were talking a lot about the history and the changes in the community and the fact that these particular photos are unique in the sense that many of them actually are identified, as opposed to a lot of collections where they weren't, they're just portraits, but these were-- mostly were identified. And eventually, I know that they hope to get it to the Smithsonian at some point, but if you're interested, you can also check it out while it's still up there at the library, and you can also catch the presentation on the cable channel whenever it's up and running, which should be soon. Also, on Thursday, the 28th, at 6:00 PM, the YMCA and New Hope and various other organizations are sponsoring a family showcase over at the Y on Ever Street. So if you have an interest in some of the organizations that are in our town, you can go check that out. Other than that, that's all I have. Our next meeting is Monday, March 11th, 2019, at 7:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. Item 34-1, vote to enter an executive session according to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy, non-union personnel, town manager's contract if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position, and if the chair declares return to open session to vote.
So.
Second. Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Counselor DePietro. Counselor DePietro.
Can you get the roll? Mr. Town Manager, can you do the roll, please?
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Thank you.